Okay, we're live up here Jeff's. Step by eye. No one here, no one online yet. Yeah, something to elevate this maybe to get the. That's probably fine.
I got a stack of folders if you'll. I think.
I got it, I got it. Yep, we're good. You know, technology is amazing and actually transcribes everything that's said.
Yeah, interesting when you get done with meeting and yeah.
You get a stuff, you get a summary and it's transcribes it and it's a good start to the meeting minutes. Speak loudly though.
Okay, it is 7:00 PM, August 28th, 2025. Public special hearing of the Nennett. District 4 to Porter. Roll call. Kevin Henderson, Kristy Howe.
Yeah.
And his fans present. Before we open the meeting, public comment, we'd like to give everybody the opportunity to take a tour of our current station so you can see what we are. What the current station is and some of the problems that we have with current station. Chief Snyder would like to give anybody that would like to take a tour of the current facilities. For free. Alright, once one thought. Alright, some rules before we open the public hearing. Time is limited to three minutes. If you ask a question, the question will be followed up at the end. Please state your name and your address when you interview yourself and ask your question. Alright, well, we're going with the public comment. Yes, sir.
My name is Lee Flotter, 7878 Gears Drive.
I'm sorry, sir, can you speak up very loud?
My name.
Okay.
7878 Gears Drive. It's a former street corner. House is just ready to build. And. I guess my question is, where did the assessment number come from? Okay, okay, that's the first question I had. I have several more, but I do only three minutes, so. You know. And for why are you in house? Firehouse? But of course, that people don't be there, stay there, or is it still want to be? I can see why one of them is. You know, they wish. Experience is the perfect thing to get things from and where this 30 cents assessment came from, who came up with that? And how did that get to where it is? Because right now I'm looking at. Because I have, it's going to cost me about $2,200 a year. That's pretty stupid. In any, in any, any situation. But I'm not arguing the fact that you moved a new station, not moving.
Hey, before we're getting more, close some of these doors and turn the panel.
Okay.
Want to do that real quick?
Good. Charlie Ford, 398 West Lafayette Drive. Mike Grant Gilson, Stephen. It's Charlie Ford, 398 West Lafayette Drive, Princess Place. With this, in there. Are you purchasing more trucks or just adding to it? Water truck? And what areas do we cover? All are all of those areas getting charged in the section of the tax when I can't add a berry. There's some tech.
Well, like I said, we'll get your question at the end. Do you have any other questions, sir?
No.
You invite us to public comment.
Yes.
Debbie Daniels, 749 West Lafayette Drive. My question is, is this money going to be asked through a referendum? To our community or our voters, will we have a vote as to the amount of this money that you're requesting? And second, how long is this increase in our property taxes going to be, are we talking a year, five years, 20 years? Forever, like how long can we expect to be paying this increased amount of money?
Anyone else?
Terry Marshall, 770 West, 750 South. Prowler. So. Question, just on the district, on the areas, how far it goes and then yeah, kind of to take on that, is this an assessment or is it a government tax change?
Yes, sir. He, go next.
Don, Don, no. 80098, Nennett Road. A question about the area we cover, I see you, see you move a lot of time to Hannah Berry. We have a contract with that area. And is it substantial enough for us to be running over there or are we doing, taking advantage of it?
I just want to add one real quick in mind, and where did, how did we come up with 10 days ago?
Jordan Adams, 35 East, 775 South. As everybody in your band of taxpayer, we know that history has shown. That when something like this is put into place, even when it's paid off at tax, it's not set away with. To me, it never is. I am 100% agree to Shawnee the new house, there's no argument shown whatsoever. Is there any assistance or help or anything from, from the county, state, government, or anyone else?
Any other comments?
Kevin Harrison, 817, South Scott, right. Is it, is there a proposed drawing of the building that's being talked about? I find the $10 million. This building, the water service or water company is building that out of it. It's 6,700 square feet, we've got. One, one in six, and we say maybe 300,000 by doing some of the work ourselves. But acting as a general contractor and this type of thing. But it seems to me that that building would be big enough to house. It's, it would house everything you've got here and have rooms for. Residents or whatever you'd like to call them. So I'm trying to figure out, do you have a, a plan in place right now, something that you're looking at? And if so, why is that? If it's limited to us, do you need to see what your problem looks like?
Is this. Why do you, why does it propose something like this? And as far as for that, very good. I will soon, just saying this because a federal facility. There should be some form of agreement between you and them for the assistance. The other thing is, are you looking at any grants, funding, funds?
Sir, can I get your name again?
Please, one.
Okay.
Paul Morrison, 501 East, Two Drive, Nennett. I don't feel that the assessment is fair because I would be paying over $900 more a year on taxes. Somebody two doors down from me is going to be paying less than $100 more a year on taxes. Why is it cost that much more to come to my house than it does there in Houston or Seattle? I never have agreed with tax assessments on this, we're a consultancy district, and I don't think that's fair either. But I think it should be spread out evenly over all the base that, that. However.
Yes, sir.
There are real high levels of laws out to move these. Per 100. Uh, we are, we're, we're 11 cents per hundred now. And now we're, and if things go through. It could go to 41 cents. Almost more than triple. Uh, I believe that. The fire department does need to move. They've got plenty of land and if they were to build a building. Uh, that had two more bags more than they need now. That would hold, hold us off for upwards of eight to 10 years. If they were to build a building so it could be, uh, lengthened. Put more bags on it, if it was structurally. Formulated, it could be progressed. Trying to build a firehouse and maybe the largest firehouse in the camp. I also want to ask the question about. Uh, redistricting, accommodating, uh, like earlier with Greenwood. I've also heard news. Making. The Prowler, the Nell, they want to combine, combine, I know the county would like to combine. Firehouses, our departments and district. The lot, uh, is your part in agreement based on. We, we combine with other departments.
Anyone?
My name is Steve Compton. My parents own property of 5399 Nennett Road. Question. Square footage of this project. Building versus a land. Cost per foot on the building. You've had the construction. So there's a plan out there, there's a drawing out there, we didn't draw. And then what is the projected income? The first year, if you guys get this 41 cents. Because I was in the county's warehouse, they could just be telling you what the net assessment fee. You have that information I might give us.
Yeah. Bob, sir. Your view of 55, 72 South, 25 West. Um, I work for a fire department, I know several of you live here, I want to see a new building. Uh, I want to see you guys get a new engine, um, and why I go to home. I'm a little concerned when I hear this number, I know your father built theirs in 2017, $400,000 for new station. Uh, I know that's been money, so maybe today that's three. I know a new engine, another million, so maybe that's $4 million, so I just, I'm not coming up with $10 million. That's it.
Is the kind of tally off it is, is the 10 million just for the bills, but also for, for equipment? And has there been more than one builder given that?
Because I have a problem with building a new fire station, I could get that number too, I mean, they just built a brand new station.
That very.
And then, yeah.
That very, it's 2.4 and it's finished.
Yeah, I mean.
And Burden's 355.
And Burden's 325, yeah, that's a huge, I mean, it's a nice, so we.
Any other public comment?
Caleb Compton, 3747 South, Nennett Road. I just, I think we're all agreeing this community, you guys need new fire station, need new fire truck, I think we agree on that. I think the biggest concern is, is the cost, over the last several years, we've got a new county assessor, I know my taxes have went up almost $375 a month. Okay, um, this goes through, it's $2,400 a year for me, so it's another $200 a month, I'm a single income family. Just got one and a half month old, I got three other kids, like, you guys have put the community in strain. It's also, I know, I know the problems. There's, there's a lot of planning for future that is assumed growth. I think there's a lot of wants on the list and right now, as a community, we need to focus on needs. Um, the, the firehouse is 16,000 square feet, which does, I mean, is one of the bigger ones in the county. Um, I don't think that's necessary. We talked about steel, it's supposed to be steel frame, you know, at, uh, amenities of a post frame ability. I would see why you can't design a post frame building to get close to the same snow and wind load. You're not gaining longevity with a steel frame as much because of the sheeting that goes on, you're still using sheet metal. Sheet metals will deteriorate, so you're going to try and build a seven year building, you're going to rescan, replumb. Band aid, spend more money, or if you build something that's right for the community now, try to get 20, 30 years out of it, it works great. And is it putting families in a strain? And then in 20, 30 years, reevaluate, tear the post frame down and build another one. I think that's the problem is, is if you need wants, not enough needs. Um, this is not center road, we don't have a face for that, and at this point, center road is even asking for another. It's SD1 that is asking for more money because they're in trouble right now, it's my impression. Um, I just don't think that this is the right, this community needs. I, I, but I, I will say that I'm grateful for the fire. Grateful for the work these men put in, I do think they deserve a new building that possibly will exist, a fire truck on the way up. They should have decent place to stay, nice rec room, workout in, nice kitchen to make food in, like, I understand. I, I work for the power company, I understand long hours, I understand what it's be like on a call and be comfortable. But we need to stop and reevaluate a 16,000 square foot. I thought it's 12 million, I heard 10 million, maybe you guys clarify that, but I, I understand the truck. You may buy a several year old, get, we're going from 11 cents, go to 25 cents, build a cheaper building that fits the budget. Buy a used truck for now, once it gets to 25 cents, save some of that money up, and when we're ready, then you can replace it with a brand new one with all the bells and whistles. I don't know, I just think we need to slow down and reevaluate what you're in here.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir. Harold Davis, 774, Andrew Jackson, 4. Uh, my question is, is how, how long is a bond going to be? Is it going to be 10 years, it's going to be 20 years? I mean, you're asking for this tax increase, is it just going to last? The amount, the years of the bond that you decide to go with? Um, or is it, like Osha said, once you taxed this much. We're not going to get no relief from this tax, we have. And. Things, the numbers I've heard has been up for just $12 million for the firehouse. $1.3 million for a new fire truck, which. I mean. That's, that's all, man. Have you asked the grant from the Federal Government, have you asked the grant with the state in the air? How many? I guess would be. How many bids do you have on this building? Uh, I mean, you had to have some bid on a building, come up with a number of $10 million or $12 million, right? I mean. You know, build something, you always take bids on it. I haven't seen any of that, I haven't heard any of them. Uh, just wondering if that's available for us to see. And if there's, I've not seen the rendering of the building, so if you have a rendering of the building. Have you already, have you already asked for a coach to build a building and have plans for the building? I mean. I don't want to live in this area for five years. Almost five years, and I agree. This, this firehouse needs designated upgrades. And I have bank for first, first responders. And, but. To pay 30, 30 cent increase on taxes is, that's a lot of money. A lot of money, how, you know.
I want to add some. Is, how is this being financed, are you going to, going to the SOR, state involving fund, which has got those rates? Know what that's possible. It's out here, it's like this. And then it's probably a third year longer for those, or that's kind of money, probably at least a third year, listen here, long, because dark for the town's 10.5, which is 20 years. So. What are the plans for this property to build if you get the new fire station?
Sir, what's your name again?
Steve Compton.
Next.
Going to 41 cents, which is one of the highest districts in the state, I believe, for sales.
Any other public comment?
Sir. John Futro, 7262, Senator Whitebrooke. So I guess my question is, what will you do with this building if you build a new station? And is this building under any kind of lease? Proper lease?
Any other question?
Public comment, Kevin Harrison, 501. The only way I found out about this meeting was going to the last. I think for the, for the meeting. It, it seemed like everything was being kept as quiet as possible. Johnson, Westside has no mention of this meeting. Are we, are we trying to do things under the cover of NIG or? Just trying to slide something through these 90 months to open a new area?
Any other public comment?
Mark Brooks. 4370, or 7340, South, 50th and 3rd, Nennett. Will this station be fully staffed 24/7?
Any other public comment, Mr. Young, do you have another? We're going to close the public comment, it's probably in terms of.
Hold on, hold on, Andrew, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
This meeting advertised, I mean, for the public, our community, and where did you, both of those meetings happen?
Hey, can I ask your name again?
Debbie Daniel.
Thanks.
I got a couple of next door neighbors. I was gonna be, I haven't heard on Facebook. But prior to that, I know there was nothing to be heard in the world.
I got a piece of mail.
I.
No, we're turning that one.
I didn't have a piece of mail. I had no mail, no, no one sent the paper, I didn't, I had not been, been in any, I saw it on Facebook from someone else, and then I reposted it on the end of the day.
Yes.
It's out of the day.
So, there's.
Good, and I'm glad, I'm, it's true.
Any other public comment?
Yes, one more, one more thing. I have to, I have to be totally honest with you, Watson. I've been like you're going to say, it's. I understand both sides of this situation. And a lot of these questions have been asked, are questions that would be asked at any given time. I spent many years in the process of the end of them. Had to build a new firehouse, had to build a new media station, you know, buying. Equipment is extremely expensive. If you have any of those, they have to be identity, so the crews know what's in. As far as buying used equipment, you're buying somebody else's product. I did the idea of buying used equipment, and I, I understand that, but. You need to have the truck to sign what your needs and your uses and your area and what you're dealing with. But the basic questions are, do you have a rendering? Do you have hits? Where did this stuff come from? How was it decided? And when might this project, when these funds go into effect on our business? That's all.
Kevin Wilson, 784, South, Theo, we wrote. We talked, took a couple of years, said something about home city, then she's going to help the cost 31 cents. But why am you going to have your home paid off or you on the other problems?
Any other question? We'll comment. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing.
Well, see, with it. Sure. I did say start with the, the project itself, the drawing, the renderings, maybe have the GM speak to you. How has it been arrived at this amount, you know, I can go through the financial part of how that applies. And then we can wrap up with, believe it or not, is that designed, anything associated, network, I mean, yeah.
Not good. Josh, you have those, you got a couple copies in the back there?
I missed, start this one copy, I can make them.
Okay, so. How long have we got for this? Okay, the number is not to see 12.8, 12.7 million dollars. This is, this number came from schematic design. Okay, nothing has been sent out of it, based off the architecture and engineering firm, this is the number that they think the building.
Okay, nothing has been sent out of bid based off the architecture and engineering firm, this is the number that they think the building could be. We have, since went back and tried to reduce those costs, the building sixteen thousand two hundred square feet. So, through your question about the size of the building and things like that, it was modeled off the station two oh one. Base space, everything else like that, that's what it was modeled off of. So, went to, borrowed this whole station to a one. So, the base space, things like that, we tweaked some layout things to work for this area, uh, and staffing that we had. The question about staffing. We currently staff two people twenty-four hours a day, four people during the day. So they're already here twenty-four hours staffed. As the budget allows, we will free staffing appropriately as the budget allows. Uh, there is no plans with any of this money to free staff us from, 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 from. So, currently, I said, two people twenty-four hours a day. The building is designing the full set. Okay, so, long-term plans, ten, fifteen years down the road, all those things are in place, we hire people, put them on staff, they're there. So, as you fasten on, I've been pointing out some things about the building. Uh, it's a total of five beds, which is what we currently have. Only there will be the appropriate heights and the appropriate lengths to get apparatus in. Okay, so you'll have three basins, the west, yes, the west, two facing minimums. Okay, so, the bay obviously does have a bulk of that building. Then, like I said, we have sleeping rooms for seven people, living room, kitchen, offices, a training room that can accommodate more than fifteen people. Um, the goal was to think about the community in the design of the building, so people needed to rent out a room for a, uh, you know, kid's birthday party, things like that, or have a, um, a meeting with their homeowners or association, things like that, that building, that room gives you use for that. As far as other amenities in the building, there's three offices, uh, a reception area for, you know, people are trying to come into the building, and that's it. It is, as we went through this, we have, the initial cost per square foot for the building was four hundred and sixty-three dollars a square foot. Based off schematic design. The building has not been bid out for bonding purposes and price. We were finishing the design aspect of it, working out all the details as far as fixtures, things like that, we had an accurate number to go and, um, appropriately bid and bond appropriately for the building. Most of the. Uh, the other thing that's included in that cost is one point two million dollars for a fire car. Okay, that is included in that total cost. Um, the other thing in there is all these soft costs. So, obviously, as you can see by our furniture back there, we have nothing to add to this building. So, those costs are also included into that cost. We covered everything on the building. Um, Chief's passing around the schematic design, what the building's going to potentially leaves, layout, and everything. You got any, you just don't have that?
Yep.
You have some ability? Uh, the different sides. So essentially, to make it easy for the jaws in different areas, think of Boxbury Grove to the east, correct, Chief? Three hundred south to the north, and two twenty-five east, all the way down to Canada. So, yes.
The old, the old water tower that says power here, on two fifty-two is the western border, then all the way down to Brown County, so it's forty-two square miles.
So, in that, yes, we covered Camp Atterbury, we also covered the John County War Department. And everything related with those, um, facilities. President of the Department of Commerce, Chief, the fire department does bill in response to Camp Atterbury?
Yes. Anytime we go into Camp Atterbury, it's been, it's been the bill afterwards. Do you have a, huh? Do you read Pedro? Yeah. So, um, in fact, in January twenty twenty, we had a meeting here with Camp Atterbury. There are civilian legal, there are military legal, there's civilian, uh, accountants, there are military accountants. The Colonel, retired Colonel, and they allowed us to back bill because they've been breaking the law on accepting our services without giving us any, uh, payment for them. Used to, when I started here in two thousand and two, Atterbury King, we were able to check, once a year for, I think the last check we got was in two thousand and seven, and it was seventy-five hundred dollars for the year, and they runs to Atterbury. In two thousand and eight, with everything ramped up over there, they had a full-time fire department, they had six guys working every day, free, free shifts, A B and C shift, that's fire department shift. At that time, they didn't want us, they didn't need us. Well, then stuff started slowing down in the early teens, they started calling us again. In twenty twenty, when we had that meeting, they allowed us to go all the way back to October of fourteen and back build them. And it was sixty-eight thousand dollars, and runs over there. At the federal state, the state set rates of a fire apparatus, an ambulance apparatus, a squad apparatus. They all have different rates. So, we went back through all of our runs for six years in backlog. With that, we used that money to outfit our ambulance to make it more convenient. We've only had one injury here, only the injuries since we've been paid standby, and it was a back injury from lifting the top. And we put an auto load drop in the, uh, ambulance, so we didn't have to pick the top up anymore. That's where that money went. And as far as federal grant money, we have a state representative working with us to help back to the station, went to the White House on our behalf and talk to D O D about what they need to do over Camp Atterbury to either figure it out or get us funding for it.
Okay. So, I'm moving right along, and I'm hoping, if you ask a specific question, as we're answering it, we're trying to catch everything instead of going to even different person multiple times. Uh, so, obviously, the question about the building drawing, it's obviously being handed out. So, how do we get to this point, how did? We've been working with a firm to come up with a general design and get it to a point where, how much is this going to cost? Okay, we can't just pick random numbers out of the sky and say it's gonna be this. Um, so, what this number includes, everything from civil engineering, site plans, all of that, to where this is, will be a turnkey package to be bid on, and whoever wins it, it's a buildable. It does not true, the county council has already appropriated two point three, or two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That is incorrect, sir, it's actually three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that they appropriated in case the bond does not go through. Because we start to pay people to draw these things up, things like that. Nobody works for free anymore. So, they appropriated those monies in case the bond fails, so we don't go bankrupt. So, yes, they've appropriated money, but it was for contingency.
Two, two hundred and fifty, is that was your engineering, right?
Correct. Uh, Jay, you want to touch on current building, what the plan is with it?
This like, when this all came about four years ago, the property, talking about ability, Commissioner Baird asked if we would be able to cut off a section of the property for the Nennahoga Heritage Group to have a park in Nennahoga. But the way the site plan laid out and the liability in terms of having a playground in our park, that's not gonna work out, and this will be turned over to the Native Heritage Committee, and there will be a park placed here.
Here's?
Here. Commissioner, is there any, any, anything wrong with those?
Yeah, we still have to receive it, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Uh, someone asked a question about the size of the building and the square footage. And the land that we have, it's six acres, and we're putting a six, the plan is a sixteen thousand four foot building. Uh, the one question about potential murders, um, I can tell you that that is in preliminary talks, there's nothing other than, yes, they're looking at it. That's all that's been discussed about it. As far as exact plan, how it's gonna happen, anything like that, nothing has been discussed.
The first meeting was this week on.
There you go.
With the port apartments. On Monday.
Okay, I think we've covered everything about the building and the property. So, I want to turn it over to Jeff to talk about the assessment, um, how it works and all that other stuff.
Thanks for sure. Um, so, on financing a project like this, the first thing to start with is, of course, that engineering estimate to see what it costs and to see how it is we're gonna finance something of this cost. The fire station construction and soft costs are approximately ten point two three million. The fire engine is estimated at one point two million. The, um, structure to issue bonds for a property like this, or a project like this, the security that the board has access to is your property tax base. So, putting the repayment on your property tax base has several restrictions. One of them is, you can't go beyond twenty years of the amount of time that the bond is outstanding. You also, if you issue a general obligation bond, you can only issue an amount that is no greater than one-third of two percent of your assessed value in total. And, uh, kinda talk about assessment. In twenty twenty-five, your taxing district in total was just over three hundred and twenty million. And your tax rate in twenty-five for their operating fund and the Cuban Fire Fund, which is used for capital purchases, is a rate of point one two five seven. So, the operating fund is ten cents, the capital fund is like two and a half cents. So, one-third of two percent of this three hundred and twenty million dollar tax base that you have will not be sufficient to build this project. And this is a problem that lots of schools have, so what they do is they establish a building corporation, they do what's called lease rental bonds. So that they can issue sufficient debt in order to cover the project. One of the issues related to that is they, as the fire district, will not be able to levy taxes on you until such time as they can occupy and utilize the building. So, when the bondholders loan you the money upfront, they're going to need to be paid during that construction period, which is gonna be a good year and a half or so. So that money gets borrowed as well, and it's about nine hundred thousand dollars to go along with the cost of the house, the cost, or the cost of the firehouse, the cost of the engine. And then the other has to do with, um, legal and selling costs and so forth. The total all in, estimated at this point, is twelve million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we expect that amount will be less as it gets to one, bidding of the project, and two, bidding of financing. Um, there's a statement made about using the state revolving fund, state revolving fund only, uh, gets utilized in utility issues. We do have the Indiana Bond Bank, which will occasionally give, uh, subsidized rates. Uh, based on what we see for you guys, I think an open market financing is going to get you a better rate and cheaper costs than going to the bond bank. The other thing is, the bond bank doesn't want to incur any projects typically above ten million for the twenty-year period, they like to do shorter stuff. But it will be a lot better than your commercial bank. The estimate that we've used today is five percent for the interest rates. Uh, I would say in today's market, what we're looking at is, the State Board of Accounts is going to come into the fire district, do an audit. Um, those results, along with this project, will be submitted to get bond rating. We think with that bond rating, you can buy insurance to potentially get like a double A bond rating and a low interest rate. I think if you can get that, uh, bond insurance purchased at a double A rating, I think today your cost would probably be around four point six percent. So, should be a little less than this. Uh, timing. Again, the timetable that we're looking at with the design of the building and the bid, the advice given to the fire district board is, they will get the cheapest bids if they can do it at the beginning of the year. So, if they get those bids in hand at the beginning of the year, as soon as you get actual numbers, then we scale down this twelve million, seven hundred and thirty thousand to exactly what you need in order to pay for the project. And we would anticipate bond closing around mid-February, uh, to early March. That being the case, you would not pay a payment until January fifteen of twenty-eight. So you would have, um, approximately half a year's payment, which would be about half a million dollars on the pay twenty-seven taxes, so not next year's, but the year following. And then beginning in twenty-eight, you would be around this thirty cents, again, that we had talked about. So, as to those amounts and actually applying to properties, the approximately thirty or thirty-one cents, if you have a homestead, and let's say that homestead is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Today, it gets a standard homestead deduction and then a supplemental homestead deduction. And there are some, um, changes that were made in this legislative session that are actually going to make those numbers greater, which is going to lower the value that you pay taxes on for your homestead. So, for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homestead, you get a forty-eight thousand dollar homestead deduction, a supplemental homestead deduction, which is equal to thirty-seven and a half percent of the remaining assessment, which is seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homestead, you pay taxes on a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If that rate turns out to be point three one oh seven, which is what we've estimated, you would pay three hundred and ninety-two dollars for the year on that homestead. If you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property that is not your homestead, we'll get rid of these two exemptions real quick. That thirty-one, that thirty-one point oh seven cents would cost you seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the year. And again, those will be properties that don't qualify for the homestead. Now, one of the questions given was, what, uh, what happens if I pay off my house? Um, if it's still your homestead, you still get those deductions. Uh, it used to be that we had a mortgage exemption, so if you paid off your mortgage, you then paid, uh, property taxes on an extra three thousand dollars worth of value. That doesn't happen anymore, now you have a, a homestead deduction, supplemental homestead deduction. So, as long as it's your homestead, you will continue to pay based on those reduced amounts with those credits. Again, other buildings that don't qualify for a homestead, they'll pay the higher amount. The rate will be uniform for everybody. The rate will be uniform for everybody in this tax base of the three hundred and twenty million. So there is no dis- uh, disparate payment in rates. There may be disparate amounts of assessment. Um, I don't remember who asked that question, but yeah, about two doors down. I think that's a question best directed to the accounting assessment. How is it that this property is this much and this property is this much?
I asked more to, to buy a fire protection for my house as one to yours down. Given the same service that I've had to pay. I don't agree with that.
Oh, well, you can take that up to the legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but you know, it is, it'll be a uniform rate. So any disproportionate amounts will be based on the value. And again, the legislature in its infinite wisdom says that we will devalue homesteads and they will pay less.
Do this, right? Hey, I believe I got it. But all the homes out there that were all banned, you know, are raped, okay? At least you understand what you've got in the building. But I was in twenty years of military, so I respect the military, but they've got a lot of buildings there and they only get charged as people out and service staff. Why don't we charge them the same way as we're charging the home bunch? Because you may never go to this home. You may go to Camp Edinburgh six times in a year.
Not allowed to tax, yeah, not allowed to tax them. And I'll let legal talk to that as well.
Well, it's not again, you get to charge for services.
Yeah.
When we go there.
Yeah, that's when you go there. But my house, I'm paying it every year. No matter if you use it or not, I pay it, which is great. But that very only pays if you go there.
I think what they're asking is could you bill homeowners insurance to pay for the fire services?
Um, one more thing that I did want to talk about, someone had brought up the comment that going to forty-one cents, you know, that's a substantial increase. And that would be one of the highest district rates in the state. I don't know about that, but one thing I would say, and just for your edification as well. Um, we haven't established new fire districts in many years because everyone now goes to what is called fire territory, where they do an interlocal agreement. The fire territories that have been set up in recent years have been, um, we've seen them high, as high as in the seventy cent range in different parts of the state. The legislature did put out um, legislation where they're looking at trying to get that down around the forty cent, maybe forty. But just to give you some kind of perspective as to where this rate would sit. Uh, let me look at my notes real quick. See anything I haven't got to? Length of bond, it is twenty years from the time that it's issued. Um, you will not make principal payments until beginning in twenty-eight. So your principal payments will run one fifteen of twenty-eight to one fifteen of twenty forty-six. It does go away. The the rate for the debt service is specific to pay the principal and interest amounts as they become due. So if your assessed value continues to grow and you have a fixed payment going forward in time, your tax rate will go down because there will be more value or more of you to pay into that pool. But when we get to that final payment in twenty forty-six, it will go what? Sure. Um, if you issue the bonds in February, part of the twelve million, seven hundred and thirty thousand that's borrowed will be used to make interest payments during the construction period in the middle of twenty-six and all of twenty-seven. Beginning in the beginning of twenty-eight, you will make a principal and interest payment. And that's when the tax rate, the tax rate will start with twenty-seven and instead of thirty cents, it'll be about fifteen. Because it'll make one payment at the end of twenty-seven to make the first payment of twenty-eight. The thirty cent, approximately thirty cent tax rate will be on the tax rolls from twenty twenty-eight through twenty forty-five. And it will be used to make the principal and interest payments as they become due. There won't be any extra money collected. It'll run that entire time period. But when you make that final payment, that tax rate goes away. That tax rate can only be implemented and imposed to pay this debt service. And it can't be continued after.
If you get your bids and this comes easy. What you're talking about.
Yeah.
Is that number one? Are you figured?
Yes.
Seven thirty, it's going to come down.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's a very important.
So yeah, we're, we're starting at the, the high point today. And again, as the president talked about, they are looking at trying to make cuts to the project itself. Again, we have put in what we believe are the high numbers in order to, um, make sure that we don't mislead anybody. But the resizing of these bonds will occur once we have those bids in hand, so we know how much you actually have to borrow. And we won't sell the bonds until such time as we know that amount, so that we can scale it down and collect the minimum that's needed.
Um, if there is more growth in between now and the next couple of years, say there's a couple houses that will be capable of base money. Does that lower the tax bond for everybody?
Yes.
So the thirty houses that are going to go across the street here would lower everybody else.
And they'd be assessed at more than most of, they'd be assessed at more than the majority of your houses. Typically. Um, I think that's it for you, Jeff.
Okay.
Um, there, there were a couple of questions on how we advertised this meeting. A couple, a couple of questions about how we advertise this meeting. You know, we're trying to do this under cover of darkness. The answer is no, right? Number one. Um, this project has been in discussions for probably the better part of three years, if not more. Um, all the meetings of the district are open to the public. They've all taken place in that creepy back room, uh, over there, uh, and all of you are welcome to come at any time you want. As far as advertising this meeting in particular, it was advertised in the Daily Journal, I think, two or three weeks ago. Certainly before the first meeting. Um, also published notice, uh, or not published notice, posted notice on the door, uh, that we were having a meeting here. Fortunately, we don't have a website, um, as someone mentioned here, so we can't post on the website. I'm happy to hear that someone listened to the recording. I think it was you. Um, so you guys are getting notice, um, and certainly if you feel like you're not, let us know. Hell, if even if you want to create a list here, I'd be happy to take everybody's email and just send everybody notices of when we're having meetings. Yeah.
You said it was in the paper. How many people here get the paper? Here's your answer. You said it was posted on the door. How many people here know to stop in here and look at the door for a posted meeting? You look in here right now, there's well maybe twenty people, twenty-five. How many's in the community? You're telling me that only these twenty, twenty-five people care about your taxes? Now tell me again that everybody in this community knew about this meeting.
Uh, I'll, I'll tell you that we met the requirements of the Indiana code for advertising and noticing the meeting. Well, because Johnson County is, is a different unit of government than the Fire Protection District. We're not one, hold on, hold on. Would you prefer us to publish it on the county website? Because I'll speak with the county administrator and, and hopefully they'll let us do it.
I do shit.
I mean, sure.
I think if we want to be transparent and definitely have the community feel good about this and not like it was trying, I'm not saying you guys are, but if we want it out there, ninety percent of people use Facebook, I think it did make it to, I hope, gosh, posted it. We'll make sure it's on, on the Tri-Power chat. Even though it's not Tri-Power Fire Department, I live a lot closer to Tri-Power. I don't come down here. I didn't know it was a new thing until me and Josh opened it, put it on the Nema chat, put it on Tri-Power chat. If we want to be transparent and let the constituents and the people in this district know it was. And Jacob, I did that two days ago. I looked it up on our Facebook page, on Princess Lake's chat, Nema chat, and Spire chat. I had for Caleb and I ended that conversation. Make sure it was out there.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions about not, notices in particular? Yes.
Is this fire and also moving more than whatever you say? I just want.
Uh, there's a question about billing Atterbury, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be blank or fair with you guys. I, I don't really know about how we bill Atterbury, um, and are you able to?
Yeah. Name's Matt Townes, um, one of the lawyers assisting the Fire Protection District, obviously. So government property is not taxed, no property taxed. Um, to get around that, they bill the government even more for certain cases. Um, that's how you need to file government, say, the government same way, uh, not property taxes either. So since they're not going to tax, they have to immediately a service route or a tax on the service route basis.
Can't you go in and have an agreement with Camp Edinburgh that we pay for fire services, not a tax, but we pay for fire services? Or are they like monthly, like yearly, like they do us?
I think you certainly can't sound like something like that is in place.
It's, they can only pay their own run. Uh, if that fire truck goes over at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, if it's there for an hour or if it's there for five minutes, we bill them for the full hour. The ambulance goes over, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Whether we're there for an hour or five minutes. Uh, personnel, twenty dollars an hour. Anything. So anytime the ambulance rolls through the front door, it's a hundred and fifty-five dollar bill. If the engine rolls through the front door, depending on how many guys is on there, it's two fifty plus. How many time, twenty times, how many people are riding on there? If we bill for anything that we go over there for, we make it through the, uh, even if it's a disregard, we get to the front gate, they disregard us, oh, it's a false alarm. Guess what? They get a two hundred and fifty dollar plus bill for all fire alarms. They will not go into a contract with us. They legally can't to pay us a, a monthly type.
Go ahead, sir.
I have one question. I think I asked it. You're saying that it's three hundred and twenty million dollars assessed value.
Yeah.
So if it's forty-one cents, how much you kind of per year paying some?
Um, the eleven or twelve cents will be used for operation and capital like they do today. Yeah. So yeah. Yeah, if we look at, uh, the twelve and a half cents that is the rate you're paying today in pay twenty-five, as a group, you're paying just over four hundred thousand dollars a year. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that is going to operations, seventy-eight thousand to the Cume Fund for capital needs. To repay the debt service on the bond, the bond payments are going to be a little over a million. We think they're going to be under one point one million. The levy to fund that would be about nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for the year. So that would be just under a million. And the reason it's a little bit less, just like whenever you levy a dollar of property tax, you have some of your other tax revenue follows it, like the vehicle exercise tax, when you go to the license branch and you say, you know, here's where I live and you pay your fee, that money comes back to all the units of government that provide you service. So that buys down that. So instead of one point one million, it's about a million a year to repay the debt service.
Mr. Compton, we're not asking for loan personnel. All right, I'm just clarifying that. This isn't, this is just the building.
I'm not saying we don't need.
Yeah.
Yes. Got two on duty. So it's up to twelve million dollars and we don't get anybody else's money.
Yeah, that's a totally different response.
Just want to make sure.
There are currently staff, two twenty-four hours a day and four during the day when we do the project.
I'm afraid you just go make everybody mad and get nothing. That's why I'm based on a nap, you guys. How are you really going to make everybody mad?
I am answering questions honestly and.
I'm going to see you get something. I really did.
Will this have any impact on homeowners insurance as far as seeing more rates about the year?
No, because right now, when I enlisted for homeowners insurance, the fire department was a non-managed fire department. So my rates were higher than, than when it was.
So that you're talking about ISO rating. In order to get your ISO, get our ISO rating down, um, we just had an ISO audit three years ago. And I had approved through that every fire call we go on that we have automatic in our box alarm, a medic truck coming from somewhere else. To get a ISO rating lower, we have to have four staff personnel, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that's where you get, and so my two guys that I have working right now, to add two guys full-time, pay standby across the, uh, board per year is three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for two people twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. What would spend about, I'll shoot. Uh, about that. Did the, right around four hundred. So that would put our operational budget at three quarters of a million dollars, where our operational budget now is four, that would be something, four seven something in our operational budget. So we've almost doubled our operational budget. And that's where the ISO ratings that they do, that's where, because I thought when we went pay standby in twenty twenty-one in August of twenty twenty, so we went people here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, it would help us. And it did not because you have to hit that poor person every day seven days a week.
That four or five hours of that medic, back, I didn't mean.
We're all, so this is the first time in Nema's history that I can proudly say that every firefighter that's here is fully qualified. They all have firefighting background too, and they all are EMT. It's the first time in the history of this department that we've ever had that. And most of the guys that work here are career somewhere else. Um, White River, Monroe Township, Franklin's Franklin, IFD. All but two people work here right now, you're getting career services because they're all further somewhere else. And they just choose to come here and work part-time.
I did, I just want to try and compare after staff. You said this rate reading was modeled after the burden fills one or two, that's like a long, a long. Um, Jeff, you got any idea what the tax base for that station, unit base is the tax base for it?
I will point out that building was offered to bill in two thousand and twenty.
So that, that's, that's not my point, but the third tax base is a person dollars, okay?
A lot. I don't have those numbers.
It's probably a spot, if you trip, we won't be down here.
Right. Probably more than.
So we're, you're asking us to spend three times the amount that another department spent. It looks like shit and you haven't known the rear budget for many.
So what we did was we took that general layout. Okay? And yet we modeled it after, because we had, we needed someplace to start from. We cut things out as a thing like if that was our starting point. I, I never once said I'm taking that station and putting it here. We scaled back, you know, their whole facilities, all brick, ours isn't. Because you went through the value and you're wasting that, that whole company, first facility, found building. So yes, that was the general idea is to take that building, make it fit our needs and scale it to what would work in the future.
You understand where I'm from?
Yes, I understand where you're coming.
So I can give you this one. Station twenty-one Franklin just was remodeled. They used the roof and all the walls. It was two point five million dollars just to remodel. It was $2.5 million just to remodel that station. So when we throw out these numbers, this, this, that was $2.5 million just to remodel the station. And didn't tear down the walls and didn't put a new roof on it. And somebody said Edinburgh. Yeah. But then go see how much stuff was donated to Edinburgh. Like their whole kitchen was donated. Stuff like that. So their Edinburgh was built cheaper, but they had a lot of donations also.
If we do that throw up for donations company, that's going to go.
The other thing I want to find out.
Well, that's the thing is we don't have those factories like Edinburgh that has a cabin factories that build all their uh, cabinetry for their kitchen. So everything that you need to understand when you're comparing firehouses, you take any, any place around except for to Bowlin. Edinburgh, they have two stations. They're not trying to put everything underneath one roof. You know, so when you talk about square footage and size of it, we're trying to put everything underneath one roof where other departments can take those things and spread them out. So you take Edinburgh, they have another station that has equipment. We have to do it all underneath one. So that's why the size of the building is. It's not a single engine satellite house like you would see in Indianapolis where it's a single bay, an engine, and you made for five people.
Did we cover all the questions?
Or is my nutshell? Anything from Jeff? Anything from you? So you do have a resolution in front of you today. Um, Max, do you want to go over the particulars of it?
Uh, so the resolution in front of you makes a preliminary determination to issue these bonds. This is a preliminary determination or several other steps involved with the bond issuance process that is issued by a known means, the last, uh, a public meeting, uh, or last available. Um, preliminary determination is, you know, for bonds of a certain size, um, you need to make preliminary determination, put it to the community, see if there's any objection from the community to issue. So resolution makes, uh, you know, that preliminary determination not to exceed 12, 12.7 million. Um, annual debt service not to exceed 1.1 million. Tax rate not to exceed, um, 5%. Uh, resolution also includes certain financial information that they also moved over tonight that I won't get into, but um, essentially this is just sort of step one in the process. Um, after this, it'll be sort of a 30-day objection period. Um, if we make it through that objection period, then we go into the actual, I guess, what you would call the actual bond issuance process. Other public meetings. Take other plates, all that sort of stuff. So, um, have the answering questions that you guys want to have about the resolution, so.
You're going to lock even bond issue without knowing what the construction cost actually are.
No, so what it states is that this is the preliminary that we're starting the process, but the bond will not be secured until a final call coming. What this also states is we will not exceed the 12.7 million.
So I assume this is the first resolution of the year for you guys.
Yeah.
Am I correct? So the market, and I'll announce it on the record for 2025-01, resolution of the Board of Fire Trustees and Aninva Fire Protection District making a preliminary determination to enter into lease payable from Advalorian property taxes. Um, and if you guys have any discussion amongst the board as to its particulars or have any questions for us, um, let us know. If not, you can take a motion.
I'm assuming you read this as well.
That's correct.
Give me the session. I have a motion. Motion Mike Evans, second body. Christie, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I assume that's a motion to pass the resolution. Okay.
Not any other special for me to be held. Move to the jury.
Yeah, it, it is. Sure, sure. Um, and here's what I'm going to do. You guys want notice directly to you? Put your email on here and I'll.
So. Preliminary determination process. They adopted this, uh, preliminary information resolution. Probably about late next year, we're publishing the A- Journal, it's called a Notice of Preliminary Determination. I noticed just that as this board has adopted the resolution, making a preliminary determination to issue those bonds. Once I notice a published, I've been 30 days. The total asset we're recommending, this is a project that is, it's sort of a two-step process. It's only to request, figure out what it is, so it means it's uh, the lesser of 500 property owners for a 5% of the name. A rich two program. Whatever that number is, I'm not sure what it's lesser, but just say 500 people to petition the board uh, to you bring this to it. Do that by going to the county member registration office, it's, and making a healthy argument. We'll be in contact with the county. But once, but once I put that, that's when 30-day objection happens. If there's enough people who are asked to, and it goes on down into Denver, 1.6. And we put up to a vote on all the others. There are more people saying yes than no, then we sort of doesn't.
If more people say no than yes, it's dead for another two years essentially.
If, if, if there is, if voters voting down, say they got petition, it's like, we might take this forever. It's voted no. It's voted no. I, I have to check, but it's like a one to two year cooldown period. So the board would not be able to, you know, fund a new firehouse or it would be, it'd be about three, four years. Uh, and not even funding, they wouldn't be able to start the process with.
So we have the, uh, preliminary stuff. Once everything gets down to A, these are the fixtures we're using. Then they will be sent out to B. That will be sometime, I think, November, December.
Well, when will we be notified about the cost factor? For that table?
At any of our public hearings, any public hearing. I, I think it's the exact date on when those are coming back.
Great. Can you tell us an example of what you said? Buying a home and mortgage, uh, section of the election. Where your actual tax assessment is.
Tax advice, like you should come play wherever you're going to post it. You don't have a website.
Do it on Facebook. So, yeah.
On the county website as well.
Well, I'll, I'll see if I can, but you know, the Daily Journal is the only newspaper of general circulation in the county, right? So it's our only option to get here. Uh, I mean, you heard the chief posted the notice on all the Facebook chats. And we're not required to do that. I don't, I don't know how to do that. I'm not part of those chats. Maybe he is. Um, we will do a better job of giving, giving you notice. If you sign that piece of paper, I will personally email you. Make sure you sign it legibly too. Okay. Okay. We are adjourned for anything. Are we adjourned?
Okay.
All right, 8:18.
I don't envy you guys. This is, this is a team. Go. This, I've been there.
Believe it or not. This is a good. And you know what? Their good opinions, their respect.
It's old hand. Yeah, I mean.
I think I've got a list. I don't really, I did a good job of saying.
Like all of your.
The only thing is that it's really hard to catch. Periodic basis when they.
Best thing you leave.